Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. This is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to pose question or comment on any matter that is before the meeting today. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you enter the meeting room, as well as two sets of the materials that are before the Board for consideration under new business. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on August 6th. Are there any corrections, amendments to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
Second.
Okay, without objection. Item number three, updates, for selectmen updates. On August 11th, I held a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2016. As was presented at our last meeting, there are proposed recommendations from the Advisory Committee of 15 percent of the cap for public human service activities. That recommended amount is $108,750. In the area of capital improvement, there's a proposed recommendation of $580,619.37, which gives the overall program for 2016 about $829,369.37, inclusive of the $140,000 that's been set aside as administration costs. So there were attendees who requested consideration that did not get funded, specifically the Greenwich Historical Society, who is undertaking a major capital campaign to improve their campus with additional buildings to house their program and archives. But most importantly, the request they seek is to fund a handicap accessible, an elevator for handicap accessibility. So over the next week or so, I'll be meeting with Princess Airfeeder to determine if, in fact, we can make adjustments, or if I would like to make an adjustment to this. It's certainly something deemed worthy, but that took place on the 11th. If I could ask someone to close the door so we don't have the noise coming in from the ... thank you. August 11th, there was the fire department swearing in. We had two promotions to the position of lieutenant, as well as two new hires to fill vacancies that occurred due to retirements. Yesterday, the Western Connecticut Council of Government meeting took place in New Canaan. We had a presentation from, let me just grab it here, Partnership for Strong Communities and Housing. They provided data to all the member municipalities on their housing data profiles. Interestingly, several of the communities share similar challenges as Greenwich in terms of aging population, adequate housing for that population as they look to downsize. Of course, also the challenge of providing affordable housing for those who are entering the workforce. This information is available on their website, which is www.pschousing.org, and you can see all the various data and metrics that they have. It was quite interesting. I did share with the Director and his assistant about the work that Greenwich has done, because there were some discussions about what's taking place in communities, or there hasn't been, and I said, "Well, if they had followed Greenwich," that we did have a board Housing Task Force that came out of the town's Plan of Conservation and Development. From that initiative, the interested individuals started the Community Development Partnership Committee, which looked at ways to incentivize private developers to build non-market rate housing in Greenwich. It ultimately wound up with the approval of a voluntary provision that would give developers a bonus if, in fact, they add units. So it took a long time, but the fact is, something did happen, and it happened through the work of the volunteers. So it really is a testament to those who led that. Mary Ellen Labine was the principal. So that was one part of the meeting yesterday. The other was a discussion about where the offices for the Western Connecticut Council will be located. The general consensus of the members is that they should find the most cost-effective place that's also advantageous to the staff whom they're looking to retain. Many of their staff commute from point south of where they're currently located. The offices presently are in Stamford, and I believe they're in Brookfield. And so they're trying to arrange a location that will work for the staff. The members are able to go to the meetings at any location, so right now, they rotate, and each community is hosted. So yesterday, we were in New Canaan; the next month, we're in Reading. I think we were in Sherman at one point. You went to the meeting in what town, Sherman? Sherman. So that was a big topic, and there's a lot of opinions on this. You can imagine getting 18 chief elected officials, and everybody wants it in their town. Granted, Greenwich is not a contender. I think we're the least geographically desirable for some of these people who come from the foothills. They were kind of making comments about, you know, coming down to, quote, "lower Fairfield County." We also had a presentation from the staff on updates to the region's geographic information systems. This is one of the initiatives that you could characterize of having value doing on a regional basis. This was done by Carl Zimmerman from the staff. In addition, we talked about the state's ever-pressing drive for consolidation and shared services. They're essentially pressing for that, and it's going to have an economic inducement if you do it. If you don't, clearly, you don't have that remuneration. But underlying the concern here is, and will continue to be, is this a push by the state to consolidate authority in a regional government that will have additional powers, potential taxing powers? Several of the chief elected officials have this concern, as do I, but are, we're trying to make the best of it. So our next meeting, as I said, is in Reading, and the featured speaker will be Kevin Lumbow, who is the State Controller. And that meeting is September 17th in Reading. We had some internal meetings. We had one regarding preparation by town staff for the September 1st EverSource Energy substation that is being hosted by the Connecticut Siting Council. It's at the Cole Auditorium. There's initial period of 3:30 that they will begin to assemble and swear in the various officials that will be testifying, and then they will go out into the field, and they will look at the proposed location and path that this will follow. Then at 6:30, they'll begin to take public comment on this. So that's through September 1st. But internally, we had Public Works, Parks and Trees, Conservation, Legal, Highway, Planning in Wetlands, look at the proposed paths. We clearly have a desired course that we'd like them to take, and I'll be presenting that to them for the record. And again, you know, ultimately, the decision is with the Siting Council. We had a meeting on the 12th with some residents of the North Mayanus Riverside area to look at improved access to the Mayanus River, particularly for kayakers and canoe, canoeers. What we were able to agree to is that there is actually a considerable amount of land, Upper Valley, that would provide additional access. And I know that between Denise Savageau and Katie DeLuca and Joe Cicliano, they're endeavoring to work with the folks to begin perhaps highlighting that more, and also improve access to what is referred to the DeLuca property, which I believe they said has been in existence since the '90s, but has limited access because of concerns about parking and loitering on that area. So they're trying to figure a way to, you know, reconfigure and perhaps give a little bit more access. We had a meeting with regard to sidewalk sales. The Chamber was in attendance, along with their agent, Tamara Kettler. The overall purpose of the meeting was to lay down a foundation for next year's sales. There were some complaints this year about the overextension of vendors into public areas. It is important to point out that there is a regulation of Town Code that stipulates that it's actually the Chief of Police who calls for when sidewalk sales take place. It's Section 3-18.2. During days approved by the Chief of Police, as annual sidewalk sales days, persons regularly conducting business in a building shall not be required to obtain a vendor permit under this article to vend on a sidewalk adjoining that building. So basically, if you have a building on Greenwich Avenue, you have a right to vend in front of it, based upon the call by the Chief of what dates. The issue really has become, as they try to expand the event, they are inviting vendors from other parts of town who are setting up shop in front of businesses that are either, you know, space vacant, which the landlords may approve, or they're from outside the central business district, and they're using public space, notably in front of the Senior Arts Center. By doing that and not having the proper permits, if something happens, the town ultimately becomes liable because of the ownership of the underlying land. So really, it was an agreement that, you know, we're going to put together an MOU, I should say, the collective we, Mr. Brangian over here, is going to put together an MOU that will be sent to the Chamber, and it will be signed by them, so that next year, it'll be well-understood in advance what needs to be done. This year, the Chief did send a letter to the Chamber. It appears there was some communication or miscommunication between the Chamber and the vendor as to what was required. So it was a good meeting. Everybody left happy. Everybody, you know, I want to say "everybody," they acknowledged they had an issue. So as a corollary to that, there was a meeting yesterday that Katie DeLuca hosted with Cindy Tominski with a couple of merchants about signage. And, you know, signs and aesthetic are a big issue in this town. We collectively probably get calls all the time from someone who's upset that zoning enforcement went out and fined them for having a sign out on the sidewalk, or they're trying to promote their business in a more remote location, and they can't put the signs out. So to her credit, Katie DeLuca, Rob Steele, and Cindy Tominski are willing to look at this and try to perhaps come up with modifications. And I think Christine Georgia Populous, who runs the Fred Astaire Dance Studio, as well as Mike Myers, who runs the Kung-Fu Shailin Studios, were in attendance. They were very receptive to the fact that planning and zoning is looking at making some modifications. Like anything here, it's a regulation, so it's not something they could just arbitrarily change. They've got to think about what the implications are. But I want to say just kudos to Katie, to Rob, to Cindy for willing to, you know, have this open door, "Let's see what we could do to help the businesses." Next week, we have back to school. The teachers will have a convocation at Greenwich High, invited to attend. That's on the 27th. I believe that's a Thursday. In addition, on Sunday, August 30th, there will be a dedication of the Mayanus River Bridge over Route 1, taking us from Cosco to Riverside. For our former colleague, the bridge will be named the Honorable David Entice Memorial Bridge. The program will begin at 11 o'clock and is being finalized, but the intent is to have a celebratory uplifting occasion to commemorate this naming, and to also note that it is the date that Dave was born, so I believe he would be celebrating his 66th birthday. So we do thank Representative Fred Camillo and the entire delegation, as well as the State DOT, the Governor, for granting the naming. September 2nd, Greenwich Japanese School will be celebrating its 40th anniversary here in Greenwich. We've been invited to attend that. I think that covers all the updates. We referenced, we didn't reference it, but last evening, there was a meeting here pertaining to delaying or having a later school start time. It was attended by approximately 40 people. I was happy to attend and speak in support of this move to extend the start time. And again, it was representative of, across the political spectrum, as well as, I think, in the community, medical professionals who have done some research to back up what has been put out by the Center for Disease Control, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics. So it's on its way to being in the fore of the Board of Ed, both the current board and the prospective board that's up for election. And then finally, we received this past, this week, a copy of the draft Town of Greenwich Harbor Management Plan. For those who've been following the town's and Board's activity, you know that the issue of harbors has been something I felt very strongly about since I've been in this chair. After many years of slow and steady progress, the commission was formed by this board and approved by the RTM, has a draft, and we will be considering this draft over the next several months, and ideally, moving it on to the RTM for consideration. But I do want to thank the commission members. They've labored very hard and long, and we look forward to their being, their report and plan being considered. On today's agenda, we have one executive session item, which is a pending claim. And for those who follow the meeting schedule, the next meeting of this board will be on Thursday, September 10th at 10:00 a.m. That concludes my updates. Item number four, old business. There's no old business before the Board today. I will say that I did receive a call on the weekly radio program as to the status of the MI for the modulators for Western Middle School. And as I told Mr. Maurer, who was one of the folks who called me, who's part of the New Lab community, that we're waiting for the Board of Education and Schools Admin to bring to us the requisite plan, which we need to have in order to consider and act upon the municipal improvement request to use Western Middle School for those modulars. So stay tuned. We should probably have that, if not by the 10th, certainly, I would think, by the next meeting. New business, we have with us today the River House, formerly known as Greenwich Adult Day Care. And why are they before us? They have had a lease with the town since 2004, '05, and they have provided a wonderful service for our residents and their families to care for adults who are in their senior years. It's a wonderful day program that is six days a week, or six days a week. And so we have, as a town, a process now by where we consider these lease renewals. They have the option within their current lease to renew. The RTM has requested we consider evaluating these each time that they come up. Our Board agreed last year, or two years ago, to, when we consider them, do certain things, such as look at the value of the underlying property, to review all the lease terms as it relates to insurance and so forth. So that's been done, and what we endeavor to do is hear the, discuss that one meeting, and then act on the next meeting. So this is sort of reading one. And Peg, welcome to the meeting, and Jill, welcome to the meeting. If you'd like to take a moment and share with us your thoughts, you're welcome to.
Sure. Thank you.
And if you tell them your full name, so they get...
Good morning. My name's Peg Drankon. I'm the Director of Program Services at River House. I've been employed for 14 years, started as the nurse. I'm sort of an Army volunteer here today to represent us. As you may all know, our long-term Executive Director retired in June, and so we are now involved in a search for a new Executive Director. I can report to you that, right now, we are down to three candidates, who we were informed on Wednesday that they are all local. One very local, I assume that means Greenwich, and one in the surrounding area. So that's good news for us. And Carol, we're certainly a visionary leader for 27 years for Greenwich Adult Day Care, and we hope we're going to find our next visionary leader. So I have, we have a report. I'm not sure if you have this overview in your packet that starts with our mission statement. Just wanted to give a little overview on what the program is. If not, I have copies. Okay.
That should be page 43.
Thank you. Yep. River House, or as we're do business as River House, we are Greenwich Adult Day Care Still Inc., and we are a medical model adult daycare. There are two types. There are social models, and we are one of 40 medical models within the state of Connecticut, which means that we are required to have doctor's orders for any client who enrolls in the program. We are required to have a nurse on site for half of the program day. Currently, we have a nurse on site for the entire, all six days that we are open, for every hour that we're open, there is a nurse there. Actually, there's two. I'm a nurse also, but we have a dedicated nurse of the day. Everyone who's there has a record, a chart, if you will, and we do care plans for each client, and we are governed by the Connecticut Association of Adult Day Cares, and there are standards which have been created that we have to adhere to. The certification through CAA DC is through a peer review process, and for the last 14 years that I've been there, anyway, we have received certification for three years, which is the max with commendation. Some of the services that you'll see on the form are, we provide therapeutic recreation. We provide personal care and bathing through our Health Department. As people age, sometimes at home, they are unwilling or unable to get that leg up and over in the bathtub anymore, and so they can't bathe at home. We provide that service for them. Socialization, which is huge for the elderly. Many times, they're at home, they're isolated, they're, you know, sitting on the couch, nodding in front of the television. We offer, at River House, we offer them a better quality of life. We provide, again, as health care, we have two registered nurses. We do any skilled nursing that our clients would require with doctor's orders. We provide family counseling. We have a social worker three days a week, does family counseling. Caregiver support is huge in this day and age, and we provide resources for caregivers in the community to come in, and Jane, our social worker, will assist them in any long-term care planning. Jane does support groups currently for wives of gentlemen with dementia, and we're in the process of forming a support group for adult children of people with dementia. We have escorted door-through-door transportation through the TAG Association. We do transportation in, certainly in all of Greenwich, and we also do transportation in Stamford. We have lunch and snacks. We provide two snacks a day. They have a continental breakfast when they come in in the morning, a full hot meal in the middle of the day, which is dietitian-directed. Often elderly who live alone, no longer able to, or don't, are not motivated to cook or plan for themselves, and nutrition is a problem. So we have a full hot meal and oversight by the nurse. Medications and treatments are given with a doctor's order, any medications that sometimes, you know, elderly people are, blood pressure medication, Parkinson's medication is given throughout the day. The nurse, with a doctor's order, the nurse is supplied with medication from the family and administered there while the client is with us. We do many community trips, outreach in the community, which is huge for seniors who oftentimes don't get out of their house, let alone avail themselves of some of the museums in town. We do trips to the beach. Actually, we did a trip yesterday that was supposed to go to Island Beach, but we literally missed the boat. So we switched gears and brought everybody back, and we had lunch on the patio instead of at the beach, and Parks and Rec Department's very helpful. I called them and asked them, "Can we still go and get on the 12 o'clock bus and take the, at least take the boat ride out, stay on the boat and come back?" Which is what we did, so enjoyable for the seniors. As we said, we're open six days a week, Monday through Friday. We're 7:30 to 4:30. A 7:30 opening is really so supportive for families who need to have someone with us while they work. A lot of times, the caregivers now, in this day and age, are working. They're sandwiched generation. They're trying to raise their families, get their children off to school in the morning, and get mom, make sure that mom is taken care of. So now, our bus will pick them up as early as 7 o'clock in the morning and bring them into River House. We're also open on Saturdays from 8:30 to 4:30, and special hours by prior arrangement. We have an experienced staff. We offer registered nurses, clinical social worker, a recreation director who is also a gerontologist. We have four full-time health aides who have been with us for 10 years minimum, which says a lot about our program. Actually, most of the program staff, hands-on staff, have been with us for 10 years or better. We offer dance movement, art therapy consultants, many, many volunteers, young and old, a lot of intergenerational programs from the schools in Greenwich, very active. The current daily fee is a very affordable $94 a day. So you have health care, you have transportation, you have health care, you have nutrition, you have entertainment for sure, therapeutic recreation, and transportation back to your home, all of which enables seniors to stay in their homes. Out of nursing homes, stay with their families, which is always our goal, is to help the family to maintain their loved one at home. No one is turned away for inability to pay. We have a great deal of subsidy through our fundraising. The Home Care Program for Elders is a great supporter of ours, and a large percentage of our population, Greenwich and Stamford, is supported through the Home Care Program for Elders. And certainly, grants from the Town of Greenwich, the United Way, Community Development Block Grants, and we have a sliding scale fee that people there, it means tested for their ability to pay, and what their sliding scale fee would be. Over the past year, we served 141 persons and provided 12,316 days of service. I might add, that's, last year, in our last fiscal year, fluctuated between 65 and 70 percent were Greenwich residents. So one of the things I'd like to say, having been here 14 years, and having been with the organization when we were in Nathaniel Witherall, we were in, we were in the basement of Nathaniel Witherall. We like to call it the garden level, but we were in the basement, and we had a capacity there for approximately, a maximum of about 50 clients at Nathaniel Witherall. The move to the building that we are in has enabled us to have a capacity of 75 people a day. I currently have close to 100 people enrolled. Not everybody comes the same days. Not everybody comes every day. So it has enabled us to increase our capacity and to further help the community, and it's also helped in terms of our location on the Post Road, has made the building so much more accessible, and it has enabled us to qualify for paratransit in the state of Connecticut, easy access, because we are on the bus route now, that anyone who is coming to the facility and lives within 3/4 of a mile of the bus route is eligible for handicap paratransit, easy access, which has been huge for us to lower our transportation fees. Also, the Town of Greenwich affords us a transportation grant that helps to defray the cost of transportation for Greenwich residents. So...
Well, thank you. Thank you for the very comprehensive overview in the program, and again, thank you for what you and your colleagues do for... And again, thank you for what you and your colleagues do for our residents. I mean, as a testament, I know family members who've had many, many years of wonderful care and fulfilling times at River House. So, thank you for, for what you do, and certainly, we look forward to supporting and moving this forward through the approval.
You're welcome. One other thing, if I could read a statement by, we have a, we have hired a consultant to help us with our strategic plan to take us forward through the next 10 years in what looks to be very trying times in healthcare, especially for seniors. The consultant has done extensive research in the state of Connecticut, talked to other adult daycares and service providers in the industry. And one of the things, one of the quotes I'd like to read you from his preliminary report that said, "With its medical model program and its state-of-the-art facility and a history of excellence in financial management, River House is seen as the gold standard among statewide adult daycares." So, just want you to know that the building has afforded us that reputation, and we hope to be there for you for more than the next 10 years to help assist the town. And although we do business at River House, we are still Greenwich Adult Daycare.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Can I quickly take your guys' picture while you're...
Sure. What is your name? Are you with the media?
No, I'm, I'd like to talk to you a little bit later about why I'm here.
Okay, well, this is a public meeting. We have a prescribed agenda. We're happy to talk with you once the meeting's over.
I just want to take a picture.
Sure, I mean... Moving to the next item under new business is application by the Historic District Commission to be appointed the quote-unquote "study committee" to investigate the property at 117 Dingletown Road to determine if it is an appropriate property to be named in historic district. We have with us today Steve Bishop, welcome, who's chairman of the Historic District Commission, as well as Ann Young, who has been part of the Historic District Commission, the Greenwich Historical Society, and has a masterful command of anything historical related to the Town of Greenwich. How's that for an introduction? So, welcome.
Good morning. Well, the preliminary step, first of all, we were approached by Maggie Larkin, or Margaret Larkin, about getting her house designated an historic property. It's, we've, I've been through the house. It's a terrific 18th-century house in a great location, and she and her husband have lived there for years, raised many children there, and she would hate to see it lost, this piece of history lost to the Town of Greenwich. And she has volunteered that she would like to be designated an historic property, which is a procedure under the Connecticut statutes whereby it's protected. You can make changes to the property, but they have to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission. So, we, of course, are thrilled when anybody wants to do this. It's not that often, and we're really happy that she would like to go down that road. I did get a letter from her saying that she would like to do that, so if I could just give that to you.
Sure, thank you.
There's an original on top and copies, just so you know that she's on board with this whole thing, because obviously, it's, it's an important step. The first step in the process, according to the statute, is, is for the, someone to be named the study group, to study the property, to make sure that it is historic and what the history is. And normally, it's the Historic District Commission that gets appointed to be the study commission. That's the way it's been for every historic district or historic property that we have in town. We have three historic districts, and we have, at this point, three historic properties. This would be the fourth historic property. So, what we are asking today is that, that the Historic District Commission be named that study group. That's the beginning of a long process we have to go through with the state and with the RTM to finally approve the designation, but this is the first step on that, on that path.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? I mean, I think this is a good testament to someone who is being responsive to the call for, you know, preservation of historic properties and the willingness to put themselves as the owner forward to do it is a real positive and perhaps a... You have a question?
I do have one question, Bill. I wonder, you said there were four, this would be the fourth historic property, what are the three ones that are already designated?
Okay. I know, I know where they are. I'm not sure I can give you every address off the top of my head, but Ann maybe can help me.
Move on, Ash.
Okay. One is French Farm on Lake Avenue. The other is...
Stony Brook.
Stony Brook on Taconic Road. That's at the beginning of Taconic Road. I don't know the number. Then there's the one on Mr. Nemser's property on Lake? No, it's on Lake, isn't it? No. I know all the properties very well, but I don't know the, all the addresses off the top of my head. But, this is 117 Dingletown Road.
No, that's fine.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. So, we have no questions. So, at this time, I would call for a motion to make the appointment of the Historic District Commission to be the study committee to investigate the property at 117 Dingletown Road. So, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? So, now, this gets transmitted to the RTM. It will be on the call. Is that right? It goes to the RTM next or no?
Well, we got, we first have to do the study, and then, 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 then it has to go to the state. I have to send it up to...
The RTM's, the RTM has to approve the study committee.
Right. Oh, they do? Oh. Okay, unless, unless somewhere in the, in the history of the Historic District Commission...
I think this is, we looked into, this is what we did for French Farm.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, so, so on September 20th is the actual meeting date, but then, you know, you'll probably likely go before land use. They'll look at it. You know, the committees, it's always assigned to the committee.
Okay.
So, I can't imagine anybody would, not want to provide for this to occur.
And we should, I should appear at that RTM?
Yes, yeah, because you're going to be the proponents.
Okay, okay.
So, so you're on your way, and we have everything to submit, right? It's all part of...
Anything else is needed, just let me or Ann know.
Okay, will do.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye. Let's see, next item, appointments and nominations. I believe we still have several to do. We did interview Mr. Bankson, who is a current member of the Nathaniel Witherall Board. Mr. Bankson was notably involved with the whole effort to secure the historic tax credits, which came through, I believe we began that discussion in 2008, '09, when it came in under a different permutation, but needless to say, I remember his initial involvement as we passed the issue off to the Witherall to take advantage of this. In addition, he's been involved with the finances, so I am happy to move the renomination of Lloyd Bankson to the Nathaniel Witherall Board for a term expiring 3/31/18. Is there a second?
Yes.
Oh, it's been seconded by Mr. Toner. Is discussion? All in favor of Lloyd Bankson being renominated, signify by saying aye. Are there any other nominations to come before the board? If not, we will proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is an executive session for a pending claim. And Mr. Rosen, do we know which attorney is...
It would be Wayne Fox.
Wayne Fox, okay.